12, we will call our planning commission meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to review our meetings from June 14th. Do we have any adjustments or a motion to approve?
No.
All right, well, I will make a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion passed. Oh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. All right, moving on to our council liaison report from the July 5th meeting. Tom, would you please do the honor?
Probably the most significant thing that came out of the city council meeting was the passing of the ordinance, which we'll be getting into a little bit later on, to approve the short-term rental agreement. It is somewhat, I don't want to say complicated, but it'd be somewhat of an implement. It is passed, it will actually operate in conjunction with our existing ordinance in that the ordinance that was passed by city council does not define where we can have the short-term rentals. That's something that's going to have to be resolved, or we will have to deal with how we're going to handle that. It wasn't affect January 1st of 2023. So it's kind of the process of coming in, establishing the controls and the licensing. I'm sorry.
The new ordinance will have an impact on how we do this, and getting the infrastructure in place is going to be done over the next several months. And it'll be in place for having licenses issued starting January 1st of 2023. And like I said before, I had my microphone on, it does not say where we can rent. The existing ordinance only allows it in some specific commercial and resort areas. And there are some areas, or there's some units that are owned by the resort that are rented out on VRBOs as well. So this is going to be, it's going to be some coordination between planning and zoning and city council as to how this is actually going to be implemented. And David and I will be able to fill us in a lot more as to what needs to be done. But essentially, that was, that was the biggest thing that we had. So, any questions on it? You have a copy of it here, so as...
You mentioned the commission, the planning commission will be involved. Is there a, at this time, is there a known next step for us to start reviewing that and report back or anything?
The, that's a qualified yes from the standpoint of, we need to be discussing how we are going to be, excuse me, handling the, the where part of it, so.
Does anyone else have questions for Tom? Thank you. All right, well, we're moving on to open forum number one. This is the first time where if you are not currently on the agenda or speaking about an item on the agenda, you're welcome to come to the podium, identify yourself, your address, and share the reason for your meeting here today.
I'm a little bit confused with all of that. I was going to get up and say, I'm going to short-term rental, or shouldn't I, or?
If you, you are welcome to address it, just state your name, address.
Okay. My name is Colleen Coats, 1130760 North Lakeview Drive. I'll have to apologize right away, I'm a horrible public speaker, I'm nervous as all get out, I tend to ramble. I just wanted to get up and say that, that we moved up here over 20 years ago, and at the time, we, you maybe remember me, I was maybe here about a year ago or so, speaking on this. We, at the time, we moved in right next door to a Breezy Point Resort grandfathered-in rental, and it was awful. It was like living next to a frat house, a revolving door of people at the time, that one said 13 people. We dealt with after-hours parties, nudity in our yard, people urinating in our yard, picking up garbage all the time. It, it just, you know, normally you think when you talk, so I feel like I've, I have had experience with what might become of these VRBOs, intimate experience with this. Then after a number of years that we went through this, then the homeowners decided to move up here, and it went off the rental, and that went away. And then the house next door to us sold on the other side, and then it started over there. It wasn't quite as, as partyous as the other one was, but it started over there. And getting back to the other, to the other side, there was one afternoon where it was a bunch of young men, and, you know, ideally, everybody wants to think, oh, it's going to be these lovely mom and pop and kids coming up to, you know, have fun, you know, in the north country. Oftentimes, a lot of times, that was not the case. The one afternoon, it was like 20 young men, and at 10:30 in the morning, the keg gets rolled out and they start setting up yard games. By 4 o'clock, no, 2, I think it was, we had heard the F-word no less than 100 times, and that's not an exaggeration. And then that was the day somebody's in our backyard, broad daylight, peeing on the tree. And there again, you know, they say, call the resort, call the resort, just like the, the county ordinance says, well, you will have a hotline, you know, you'll have a number to call. I got sick of getting up at 2:00 in the morning and calling, you know, you turn on the lights, now you're up, and I'm calling, and calling, and then the next weekend, calling and calling. And so I, realistically, we could be faced with being surrounded by 20 to 30 people every weekend, or even all, all throughout the summertime with these VRBOs, and we're a mile outside the resort. And that was oftentimes what they would complain about, is on the resort, it looked like, you know, you can't tell proximity. And they'd get up there and they'd be like, we can't even walk to the resort from here, it was that far. So that was kind of one of the complaints. Throughout Breezy Point, throughout the main Breezy Point, a lot of these lot sizes are not that big, you know, ours is not. We are like bing, 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 you know, in there. And that's another thing that I think, you know, when you start getting 10 to 20 people in a house, and then sometimes on both sides of you, that's a lot of people, and just the natural amount of noise, just normal amount of noise, that people are going to make, that that many people are going to make, is considerable. And the other thing is, is when people are on vacation, they do not act like your neighbor, they don't act like they do at home, and they don't act like your neighbors would act. You know, when we moved up here, my, when we moved up here, my, we retired up here, and my husband only lasted a couple of months, he got bored, now he's back to work, so he's an active working member of the community, many times has to get up at 4:30 in the morning, so these, these hours can be an issue. I mean, I realize that, you know, the world can't revolve around us. Now, 20 years later, we've aged, and the stress, I mean, normal stress of life, and then you start throwing something like this on top of it. It just, it just doesn't seem fair that you buy a house in a residential community, and next thing you know, you're bookend by what could technically be a mini hotel or motel. You know, it just does not seem fair. My neighbor has used this expression, I hate to possibly use this, well, let's just see what happens, sort of an attitude, because like my neighbor often refers to, once you get that toothpaste out of the tube, good luck getting it back in again. And there have been, throughout the nation, there have been other communities that have been just wrecked by these VRBOs or these short-term rentals. And most times, they're not your local neighbors, they're outside company, corporations or companies coming in and doing this. You know, and I know there's, there's always that issue of, well, you know, it's bringing money into the community and that kind of a thing. Well, if that house was not a rental house, it's not going to sit there empty. It would most likely be the owners that would use it, or potentially year-rounders that are bringing money, you know, that live there, like many of us do, that are bringing money year-round into the community, not just three months out of the year. Short of that, you know, going forward, I hope you consider this in trying to make this decision about the zoning. I think the zoning, it has a lot to do with it. Like I said, we're a mile outside the resort, we're in a very residential community. I can see it closer to the resort, how, you know, maybe you'd want to let it be. Right now, I think we're at four times a year, and I think that's a great compromise for, you know, allowing people, if you want to rent your house out, but, you know, not so it's overwhelming, because right now, you know, while we put up with that, you know, when you'd have some in there that you, you know, here we go again, you knew that it was going to end, you knew that it was going to be over, you know, shortly or whatever. Short of that, I just want you to, you know, keep this in mind, that most people, you find out most people, there's a lot of people in the community that don't even know this is going on, or this is up for discussion right now. And most people don't seem to care until it affects you right directly, then people seem to care. And, and like I said, so many people think, oh, it's not going to happen next to me. Well, it can, and, you know, likely it could possibly. Other than that, I just would like you to keep this in mind going forward. But it, it was bad. It was, when it was, like I say, that grandfathered-in Breezy rental, it was just a revolving door of cars and people, and you try to go out on your back deck and enjoy yourself, and you're constantly looking at strangers.
Thank you, Colleen.
Anyway, thank you so much.
Have a, I just have one question. Can you remind me, do we have any more public forums on this that would be coming up?
Specifically on the new ordinance, no. That's been, that's been approved. But then, if we're going to be changing our existing ordinance, then that will require public, public hearings.
Thank you so much.
Do we have anyone else that would like to share with us today? All right, we'll close public forum number one, and we will move on to the public hearing for the conditional use application, C-22002, for Christopher and Monique Cobb at 32738 Northwoods Lane in Breezy Point, parcel 1040830, to construct a 1536 square foot accessory structure in zone R2, that's labeled medium density residential. All right, so we will currently open up the public hearing for this, and invite the applicant to come to the podium, identify themselves, and share their application.
Hello. I'm Chris Cobb. I live at 32738 Northwoods Lane. The, there is a correction on the size of the structure. We were a little, we had a delay in the survey that just literally got completed today, and we sent a revised survey to Jerry with the new size, because we had not taken into consideration the other accessory structures on the property. And so we, in order to make it fit, and we're going down to 13, 1360 square footage.
1360?
60, yes. Proposed garage would be 1360, because we have a boathouse and a shed. So we had to take those into consideration, and we want to stay under the 1,600 total accessory structure size. And so to make it fit with the setbacks, and to make sure that it doesn't interfere with the road setback, and fits in the corner, and fits where the well's at, that's what we ended up doing. So it's, it is smaller, but I still think, you know, because it's, the total amount is over the 1,260, I think is the limit, we had to come in and get your guys' approval.
Does anyone on the commission have questions?
Not at this time. No.
We may bring you back up if we have some further questions later on.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Is that what you need? Okay.
Jerry, you would like to share your staff review?
Okay. First of all, there was a certificate of survey that was given to me this afternoon. I've made copies, the commission has copies of the, the survey. Again, the applicant is Christopher and Monique Cobb. The address is 32738 Northwoods Lane. Property ID is 10040830, and it's part of Lot 1, Long Lake Landing. The zoning is R2, medium residential, the city code 153.032. The original request that we received was to construct a 1536, 1,536 square foot accessory structure, 15 feet in height. That since has been revised to 1360. And the, as Mr. Cobb stated, the reason for the revision is that the maximum that's allowed in that area on this size of a lot would be 1,600 square feet of accessory structure. There is an existing boathouse that's 162 square feet, a shed that's 72 square feet. The proposed total square footage of accessory structures is 1,594 square feet. I think you can see that on the survey. The survey indicates that the building would be located within the building envelope. It also indicates that the proposed impervious coverage with the new structure would be 22.8%. 25% is what is the maximum that would be allowed in that district. The use is an appropriate conditional use in the land use zone. The property is R2, and the request is appropriate under section 153.044. The use or the development conforms to the comprehensive plan, is compatible with the existing neighborhood, and the use with conditions will not be in risk to public health, safety, welfare, decency, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, or prosperity of the, of the property. The applicant has filed the appropriate application for COP. The applicant has paid the appropriate fee. Public notice was given to all folks within 350 feet, and there was also a published notice of the public hearing. Public hearing is being held as we speak. We've reviewed the site plan, we've reviewed the application. Any application, if it's approved, would need to meet state building code. Accessory structures cumulative up to 1,600 square feet on parcels of two acres or less are allowed by the ordinance with a conditional use permit. If the commission so sees fit and approves the COP, potential conditions of approval might be, the applicant shall obtain a building permit for a principal and accessory structure. Applicants shall comply with setback requirements. Siding and roofing of the principal structure and accessory structure shall be of similar material and color. All structures shall comply to the state building code. Height shall not exceed 15 feet, and accessory structures shall not exceed, total accessory structures shall not exceed 1,594 square feet. The structure itself is proposed at 1360.
All right, does anyone have questions for Jerry?
Jerry, the, the smaller shed on there, what's the dimensions on that, or square footage is?
It indicates that the, the one shed is 72 square feet, and the boathouse, which is furthest towards the lake, is 162 square feet. What the actual dimension is, it doesn't indicate it on the, on the...
So just 72 square feet, okay.
Jerry, a question on the height, the 15 feet, can it be higher than that? No.
With the conditional use permit, it could be higher.
Up to 20, right?
Right.
It says in the, okay.
But it's not proposed to be.
Right.
Yeah, the, there, there's a hill that goes up, and the garage will be backed up into that hill, and that 15-foot midpoint is from the top of that hill to the midpoint of the garage. And it's about four feet, I think it is, that's going to be, you know, a block back of the garage.
All right, well, then I will open this up for public input. If anyone in the audience would like to speak on this matter, feel free to approach the podium, identify yourself and your address, and give your input.
Diane Williams, 32744 Northwoods Lane, next door. And I'm very relieved that the survey came in and it corrected the issues that I had. So as currently proposed, I'm perfectly fine with it. The other way I was not, when it would have been over the accessory structure square footage. Thank you.
Do we have any other public input? All right, well, we'll close the public hearing portion and move on to action. Does anyone here on the commission have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve C-22-002, conditions 1 through 6, with the, not to exceed, what, 1,594, Jerry? Correct?
1360 and 1,594.
Make the total, right.
All right, we have a motion, and just to recap that, it is per according to the conditional use permit outlined in our packet with one change, as the accessory structure will be changed from 1,536 to 1,360, with all the accessory structures on the property being up to 1,594 square feet. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion has passed. All right, moving on to the next public hearing for variance application, V-22002, at 29358 Piney Way, Breezy Point, parcel 10210744, Lot 5, First Edition to Edgewater Beach, to expand the legal non-conforming use existing dwelling and existing shed that is in zone R2, medium density residential. So we will open up the public hearing, and I invite the public, the applicant to come up and present.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us out. Basically, I'm representing my brother Paul, my brother John, and myself. There's three owners on this piece of property.
Can you please identify your name? I think I missed that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't give it to you. My name is Dan Paneski.
Thank you.
And the property is 29358 Piney Way, Breezy Point. Looking at your packet, you can see that our property is a pretty unique property, in that we aren't meeting setback requirements and certain variance issues, so that's the reason for this application. Our property is starting to age a little bit, and we're concerned about keeping the longevity of the property as long as we can for our family and our, our kids, and because of that, we need to re-side, re-roof, do different things. So at that point, we just thought if we could improve the property a little bit, that's kind of what we're looking for. As far as the shed, right now, because we're limited on the shed size, and because of our access challenges on this property, we have some of our equipment, mowers, wood, things like that, that we use outside under tarps, and we would really like to keep the aesthetic value of the property neater and cleaner by keeping it all under a roof and keeping it lasting longer. So that's the main gist of our application process. So thank you for your consideration. I'm here to answer any questions that you have, and don't know what else to say at this point. But we've been coming up here for 60-plus years, since the late 50s, and so we love this area up here, and we're trying to do whatever we can to be good servants of the area, so.
Thank you, Diane.
All right? Thank you.
If you'd stay for a moment, I'll see if you have any questions here for Diane.
With your, that you're gonna, I guess, put a new roof on that area, and cantilever two feet.
Right.
So the existing roof, will that be changed at all?
Yeah, well, if, looking at the print, like, it looks like a three-season porch off the end of the property, and we've got an existing deck or wood-encircited area there right off that door. What we'd like to do, where the grill is, what we'd like to do is two things. Number one, the reason for the cantilever and extending the roof line is because the main cabin level, we have to step down, two steps down into the main area, that's where we keep our refrigerator and stuff. We would like to raise the roof to match the main part of the cabin, and bring the floor level up. That's the reason for the cantilever. And just bring the roof to match the full roof size of the main part of the cabin. Typically, we keep our shoes and coolers and other stuff out there too, so it'd just be nice to have that roof over that. The cantilever on the backside of the cabin, or of that porch right there, that two-foot cantilever, we're thinking that, you can see that little box shed, that's over our well pump there. By putting the two-foot cantilever out, we can hopefully eliminate that little shed thing, and make it look a little tidier and neater, and put our pump under that. So we're just, we're looking, we need to paint, we need to re-side, the windows are starting to deteriorate, and we would just like to upgrade the property, and that's the main reason.
So you're not going to tear off the existing main cabin roof?
No, no.
Just re-roof it?
We're, we're just going to match the main cabin part of the roof.
Pull that forward.
We're going to bring that three-season porch roof up to match it, and it'll give us a little more ceiling height inside there, so we can, it'll just be easier, we won't have to have that step up, so.
Then the shed, you're...
And then the shed, that's be, I don't know if he sent you pictures of the shed.
Yeah. That'll be removed, and then the other one, replace it?
Not that shed, the shed that, right here.
That one, yeah.
As you can see, we've got wheelbarrows and mowers and ladders and things outside the shed, and this shed has basically been there since we bought the property, and it's pretty dilapidated, and we would like to re, rebuild it, basically, and we'd like to make it bigger so that we can enclose everything and make it look tidier, and we're all about keeping the area looking nice and not junky. So it bothers us, the fact that we have to keep things out under tarps and that, so, anyway. It's a challenge, because we have no road access to the property, and everything has to be boated over, and so we try to keep as much there as we can, or if that's needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions at this moment?
You know, if I can make one other comment, again, looking at the property, we have lots of property, square footage-wise, but because of the uniqueness, the shape, and the size of it, you know, it's really long, but it's really skinny, and it's a point, it sticks out there, so the setbacks are, we can't do it with certain sound pack requirements, so.
Do you have, I didn't see this in here, do you have an idea of about what the amount of property is?
I think I figured we have like 900 feet of lakeshore, but I, I don't know the square footage. I should know that, and I apologize for not knowing that. How much is it?
Twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-six. Deb, if you want to put on the document camera.
So cabin, shed, we've got a lot of open area here, tons of open area here, but...
So when you put the new shed in, you're going to run it the same way as the existing one?
Yeah, we're gonna, our, our plan is to basically leave it in that same area. There's some trees, existing trees, if you go back to the photo, we're gonna sandwich it between the existing trees. We're all about trees, we don't want to cut anything down, and we just think it would look best there if we leave it there. But, I mean, we could move it to a different spot if...
It's probably the...
But it's...
Otherwise, you move it other places, you may get closer to the water than what you already are.
Well, yeah, that's the biggest challenge, for sure. I mean, we're not on the water. My wife's always concerned that we should put pontoons on the cabin because she's not a swimmer, and she's afraid that high water, we're gonna float away, so.
All right. Thank you so much, Dan. We may call you back up if we have more questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we'll move on to the staff review. So Jerry, would you kindly share with us your review?
Again, this is variance request 22002. The applicants are Paul, Dan, and John Paninski. Legal description is lot 5, first addition to Edgewater Beach. The address is 29358 Piney Way. The PID number is 10210744. The zoning is R2. Seward, this property is serviced by Municipal Sewer. The applicable codes are 153.007, 153.032, 153.120, and 153.077. The request is to raise the floor level of the attached porch and deck at a two-foot cantilever on the west. Elevation porch only matching roof line over dwelling porch and deck, including, including, enclose existing deck, and rebuild existing 10-by-12 shed to 12-by-16. Property is located at 29358 Piney Way. The property is in narrow peninsula, in Musso Bay, Pelican Lake. The property currently hosts the house of, our dwelling of 720 square feet, an enclosed porch with deck and a 10-by-12 storage shed. The existing dwelling is approximately 18 feet from the OHW on the west and 15 feet from the east OHW. The property is served by an onsite well in Municipal Sewer. The application, applicant is again seeking a variance to expand the existing dwelling, which is considered illegal non-conforming use by constructing a two-foot by 9.8-foot cantilever addition to the west of the existing porch and over the enclosed 6.3-by-9.8 existing deck, cover with roof line matching the dwelling. Also seeking a variance to rebuild and enlarge the existing storage shed to 72 square feet. The existing dwelling and over, and storage shed are considered legal non-conforming use because they are closer to the OHW in Pelican Lake on all sides. Variance is illegally permitted deviation as permitted by Minnesota statutes 462.357 subdivision 6, and may be amended from time to time from provisions of this chapter as deemed necessary by the Board of Adjustment when the strict interpretation of the ordinance would create practical difficulty and be impractical because of circumstances relating to lot size, shape, topography, or other characteristics of the property. And when the deviation from the ordinance with any attached conditions will still be in keeping with the spirit and the intent of the ordinance, variances cannot create a land use not permitted in the zone. Again, the applicant contends that the practical difficulty is the size, shape, and of the lot, its proximity to the lake. Property is part of a 1958 plat. The use is consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Impervious coverage is proposed to be less than 5%. The following findings of facts may be used to support denial of a variance request. The property pre-exits, pre-exists subdivision and zoning regulations. Impervious coverage does not exceed 5%. The proposed expansion do not encroach the OHW more than the existing dwelling, and the water-oriented structure could be constructed 20 feet from the OHW. The following would be potential actions the Board of Adjustment could do, they could deny the request or re-prove the request to increase the volume in illegal non-conforming use. Should also point out that the, and I think Mr. Paninski addressed it a little bit, there, there has been, over the years, some issues about access to the property from the land. I believe the only access that they have today is from the water only. We did receive a letter from the adjacent property owner. I did share that with, the commission has a copy of that letter, and I also shared that letter with Mr. Paninski. Basically, the letter contends that he has no problems with the land use, he just doesn't want to have this affect the access issues in any ways.
So to clarify in that, Jerry, if there is construction activity to occur, it might understand that they don't have to bring materials by boat, they would have access through that property for construction, or no?
There is no access today.
Right.
Other than off the water.
Okay. So when it, this letter, it says it only allows for construction activities? Just making sure that I'm clear on what the concern is. They would have to bring materials by boat for that, the construction of the, the home addition?
The letter states, I, I do want to remind the commission that there is no land access to the property, and that the Paninskis will need to access the site by water and/or ice, as they have done previously. Approval of this variance shall not impact an access to the property. It only allows for construction activities. Construction activities are the proposed activities that the Paninskis are proposing to do.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question, please?
I will open it up for additional inputs, so. Any questions for Jerry at this time?
No.
So the, the shed that's there, is that conforming with the, the high water right now, the mark there?
10-by-12 sheds are allowed within 20 feet of the OHW and 10 feet from the side property line. The shed is closer than the 20 feet from the OHW as it exists. Technically, they could rebuild that shed on the site, the same size that it is, on the same footprint. They're asking for an increase in size also to a new shed, which I believe there's enough property that they could locate that 20 feet from the OHW.
So to go to the, the size of the shed that they want to build, they would have to be a minimum 50 feet, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Right now, as it sits there, 20 feet right now, or less than that?
Right now, a 10-by-12 or less can be located 20 feet from the OHW. Anything bigger than that has to conform to the regular setbacks, or is, or apply for variance from the OHW.
Well, I just wonder where, as it sits right now, is it, is it conforming where it sits right now, the distance?
Can we bring that survey up again? I believe that survey indicates that it's 9.8 feet, the corner of the shed is 9.8 feet from the OHW.
So we're ten, about 10 feet too close right now?
And I think you can see that on the, on the survey that's on the screen.
And it looks like there would be no other place to put it that would give it greater distance from the ordinary high-water mark, correct?
Well, that, the, the area that that's located in today would never meet any setback requirements. It could be put back at least 20 feet from the OHW, and there'd still be room on that site to do that.
Is that further off-screen then?
The, where the shed is located in the, on the site today, there's approximately 60 feet from one shoreline to the other shoreline. That could be moved to 20 feet on either, to either shoreline and still exist in that, in that piece of property.
Where, where would that be, Jerry? Where, where would that moved location be?
You could move that to, I believe, to the east.
Oh, okay.
That'd be west.
And still be maintained on the property, but it would never meet the 50-foot setback that's necessary.
Right, right.
It would never meet that.
Right.
I don't, there's no place on this...
Right, that's what I was getting at, yeah.
It would never meet the 50, it could meet the 20 for, for a...
10-by-12?
Storage shed on the lakeshore. Very similar situation to the one that you had on Timberline Point a while back. Similar, but not exactly the same.
What about up, and the other piece of the property, is there more, more room? I mean, obviously, the other direction of the water?
Down further?
Are you saying in here?
Well, what's on the other side of the house? The opposite end, where?
That's the same situation as, as where it is today.
Okay, so it doesn't get wide enough anywhere?
It, it doesn't widen out more than, you know, maybe 10 feet more.
But further, the other way it does, doesn't it?
If you go down to the basic end of it, it does widen out. Where it meets the, the rest of the land, the rest of the peninsula.
If it, if it were moved to where the word "two" is, Jerry?
Where the what?
Where the word "two" is. It seems like that may be the location that would create the greatest distance.
Are you asking for a location that will give you the greatest distance from the, from the shoreline, or the, the OHW? Is that your? Then it definitely someplace in this area.
Right. Would you have a ballpark figure of how many feet that is from the house?
Now, without getting a scale, but I'm assuming...
At least 100, huh?
It's, if that's 300 total, 350 total, that's probably 150, 100 feet to the, to the house.
But one idea here is to make it conforming to a shed, which is only...
Well, there's two issues, making it conforming. As it stands, a 10-by-12 shed can be built on, because it's a not, illegal non-conforming use, it's pre-existing, it can be built right on that site. The only reason we're even having this discussion is because they have asked to increase the size of that shed to 12-by-16. But replacing that shed on that site doesn't require anything. It's an over-the-counter permit.
Madam Chairman, could I ask the applicant what their reaction would be to moving that shed further to, to that location that would give a greater distance?
Talk to something like that?
Yeah.
Dan, would you mind coming back up to the podium?
No problem.
And just restate your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Dan Paneski at Piney Way, 29358, whatever my address is, sorry. Anyway, as far as regard, removing that shed to a different area, sure, if that's what it takes to, to satisfy the, the council and that, we'd be open for that. Our main reason, obviously, for leaving it where it is is because, like I stated earlier, there's a couple trees there already, and it would fit nicely. If you bring up the picture of the shed, the size of the shed we're gonna build, again, we wouldn't have to move or take down any trees or do anything, nor would we have to over here. But if we need to move it there to get it to pass, we would be okay with that. It's just less convenient, too, but it's, it's something that we could live with. The other comment that I guess I would have is, just because of the looks of the property, it means a lot to us. I just think that keeping the shed and the home closer together rather than spacing it out on the property would just look more uniform or conform a little nicer, but we're open to whatever. We're pretty open, so, thank you.
At this time, we'll open up for public input, so if anyone here would like to share their thoughts, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and go ahead and share. All right. Does anyone else here on the commission have questions for Dan, or anyone in the audience?
No.
No.
All right, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it for commission discussion over any motions.
I don't, what do you think, Joe?
You know, we're always concerned about setbacks, especially ordinary high watermark setbacks. That's, that's my only issue.
Right. But no matter where you put it, it's going to be an issue, so.
Right.
And it's one of these older properties that
58?
Relates any of this. That would have been a requirement at the time that it was first constructed. And I can see the practical difficulty in wanting to have a larger shed because there is no other access to the lot. So they probably have more need for storage on premise.
Right.
Haul things back and forth as easily, which is practical difficulty. It's very definition of why that would be the case.
True. Jerry, can I ask Dan another question about the shed?
Sure.
Is it going to look similar to the existing one, or what's it gonna, just to?
Again, back to looks, we're going to probably try to make it look like the cabin. We want to put James Hardy siding. We want to dull up the cabin a little bit because it needs siding, roofing, the whole works.
Okay.
And my brother Paul is a trim, finished carpenter and in the construction business, so we're all about making it look good. So yes, we're going to make that shed conform to the look.
Okay.
So it looks nice, for sure. That's a definite priority for us, so.
So would it have just a wood floor?
Well, we'll probably put it up on blocks because the existing shed right now is right on the ground, and you get all moisture and the rot in the bottom. So we'll probably raise it up on some blocks or cement pillars. And then, yes, it'll be a wood shed, correct? It will be a custom-built shed. It won't be a prefab shed, and we'll have some windows in it, again, to conform, to make it look like the mini cabin to tie in, so.
This is neither here nor there in terms of the application. I'm just curious, what kind of boat do you use to transport your materials and?
Funny, well, the reason why I laugh is we have an old, old pontoon that we call the Banana Boat because it's yellow. And it's, that's kind of our barge that we go back and forth. We also have, we have some recreational, another pontoon and other recreational boats, too, that when we have them up here, we use those, too. But mainly, our Banana Boat Cruiser, up to this point.
Do you access the water at a public landing?
No, at this point, we have relatives across the bay.
Oh, okay.
So we've been blessed with that fortunate aspect so that we're able to use, store our boats and use part of their lakeshore. Otherwise, yes, we would have to go all the way to Breezy or Jones Point or something, and it would be a real pain.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so it's, fortunately, we have property that we're related to across the bay, and that makes it huge, or helps us a lot.
Yeah.
So the only problem right now is inclement weather, and then, of course, certain times of year when the ice isn't thick enough, we can't get to it, so.
Sun's out right now.
What?
The sun is out right now.
Oh, yeah.
That'll change.
It's great, it's right, right on, so. When the weather's fine, we have no problem, so it's good. Thank you. Anything else, or?
I, I would not oppose a motion to approve this.
I probably agree, other than maybe moving it a little bit west. Kind of center it maybe a little bit, I don't know.
Or elevation?
Right.
I, I think you could say that it has to beat the 20-foot OHW setback.
Pushing it further south may be, like Dan said, a little more difficult.
And are we accomplishing anything?
Correct.
I mean, with the regulations that we have, having it 20 feet from it would be accommodating what we're trying to.
Basically, you're, you're moving 11 feet.
Sounds good to me.
Are you making a motion?
I'll second yours.
You make the motion, I'll second it.
Okay, I, I would move the approval of this application with the condition, help me with the wording, Jerry, that the renovated shed.
I think it's in there.
Okay, okay. But I, I move the approval of this application.
Are you?
Can I summarize that for you, just so that you can
Yes.
confirm if that's what I'm understanding? So we're basically saying that the applicant contends that the practical difficulty for this is the size and shape of the lot. So the motion would be to, one, approve this with the reasoning that the property pre-exists subdivision and zoning regulations, continues that the impervious coverage is not exceeding 5%. The proposed expansions do not encroach on the OHW more than the existing dwelling, and the water-oriented storage structure would be constructed 20 feet from the OHW, allowing a expanded shed, what should be 10 by 16 square feet, and approving the request for the expansion of the property as listed.
That sounds good.
I believe they were asking for a 12 by 16. You said 10 by 16.
Let me confirm if I Correct, so let me rephrase that, 10, or, I'm sorry, 12 by 16. Had it written wrong, thank you.
I move that wording.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second? Do we have a, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any not in favor, say nay. Motion has been approved. All right, next item on the list is Brad Thayer, 8442 Bushman Road, a rezoning request. Jerry, would you lead us through? Actually, yes, if the applicant is here, feel free to come up.
Brad Thayer, 8442 Bushman Road. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, I am coming to you to discuss the potential of relocating my small business to my 20-acre property. For the last two years, I've been searching for commercial properties in and around Breezy Point. The simple truth is that there is a very limited amount and even less properties that would meet my needs. I've been working with a realtor and have also been in touch with Bladec to assist me in the process. I believe that it would be possible to run my small business without disruption to the neighborhood for these very reasons. I'd have a building that would be less than 4,000 square feet. I'd have no signage on the building or anywhere on the property. I would not be open to the public, so no foot traffic or retail business. There'd be no noise or nuisance, no semis or large deliveries. I have one employee who is my brother and also a Breezy Point resident for the last 17 years. The building would not be visible from Bushman Road. As you saw from the sample part I provided to Jerry, that is the largest part that I manufacture. That sample piece is 4,000ths thick, approximately the same thickness as a piece of paper. This company has been in business for over 40 years, with me being a part of it for 23 years, and the last four and a half years as owner and operator. I started with them in 1999 and was the sole employee when the company moved from Indianapolis to the Emory area in the summer of 2004. The previous owner has a cabin nearby, and I purchased the house here in Breezy Point. Due to the proprietary nature of our work, it will remain as a small, family-run operation. It would be too risky to bring in another outside party who could potentially take my proprietary processes and go into business for themselves. I appreciate that you have taken the time to listen to my proposal tonight, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Is there any questions?
No.
All right, we may call you back up.
Thank you.
Jerry, would you lead us through this?
Well, again, his original request was to consider rezoning of the property to Urban Reserve, and under Urban Reserve, manufacturing light industrial uses are a conditional use. If that were to, to work, you would need to schedule a rezoning hearing, proposed rezoning hearing to Urban Reserve, and consider that, you know, take the public input and conserve, consider the pros and cons of, of the rezoning itself. And then, a second step would be, if the zoning were approved, to consider a conditional use permit to allow manufacturing and the construction of a building in, in that, that area. The one thing that gets a little bit, from a planning standpoint, gets a little bit challenging is that you'd be looking at rezoning a 20-acre parcel that's in the middle of some wooded residential property, and it really isn't consistent with a rezoning at this, you know, as one parcel in itself. I did talk to Mr. Thayer about the possibility that most of the property to the west, the Long Bushman, is, if you get further west, is, is all Urban Reserve. And if you could tie those, that Urban Reserve property to the next-door property and his property, the rezoning might have a little bit more legitimacy than just rezoning one spot or a 20-acre parcel in the middle of some residential property. That, the previous city administrator here owns the property to the west that is between the, Mr. Thayer's property and, and the other Urban Reserve. I've not talked to him about whether that's a potential for him, but I did ask Mr. Thayer to contact him or to, I, I suggested that that would be a good thing to start with. I did also, the last time I met with Mr. Thayer, I did also give him some other ideas of maybe where something could be located. I don't know where he's gone with that, whether he's been able to contact the folks that I gave him names of, but that's really where it sits now, is it, as proposed, it would be a spot rezoning.
Which would have to be a public hearing and all that, correct?
Would need a public hearing. It actually probably needs two, if, if in fact you were going to do that, one for the rezoning and one for a conditional use permit. I don't know that, you know, you haven't received any public input yet, and you probably will receive some. For or against, I don't know, but I would anticipate there would be some.
So in thinking about this, I kind of looked at our comprehensive plan that was updated in 2020. One of the things that seems to keep coming up before the commission is that we have commercial units in the area, but we only have 6% of Breezy Point being commercially zoned. And in our comprehensive plan, over the majority, like 52 or 54% of the people surveyed, said their highest priority for future growth in Breezy Point is commercial and retail growth. So I kind of read through this to see what, what do we say about this, what do we want? And one thing that keeps coming up through this, reading this, is that we want to promote entrepreneurs, home business, and then, just in, I guess, in consideration of this, I did find an area under Goals Number 7 that said to review site development regulations and ensure they come, they encourage commercial and light industrial development rather than hinder it. So I was just using that to kind of take into consideration what is, when you're putting together the last planning, the comprehensive plan, what do we say on this? What do people want? To know if we even should be talking or considering this. So based on those things, I think it's definitely worth consideration. And I don't see, even though we have commercial lots, I don't see, I went and searched, it doesn't seem to be a lot available in Breezy Point for us to meet this goal of expansion. So those are just the things that I went through in my thought process to see is rezoning something we should be looking at for Breezy Point to help with the commercial development? What's everybody else thinking here?
I don't think you want to, to a spot rezone, or, that's my opinion.
Quick question, have you discussed at all doing this under home occupation?
Originally, we did have that discussion. You know, we get into the, the question of employees. You get into, you know, you get further into the, the discussion of home occupations, and you, you get employees. Okay, so you're limited to family members only, or people living there? What happens if one of them dies, and they need to replace some, somebody? Or one of the family leaves? They need, you know, they need to keep up production and that kind of thing? Technically, they'd be in violation of the home occupation thing. So that, that becomes a little bit troublesome. I think the, the same thing, you know, you're, you're still going to be holding a public hearing for a home occupation if that's the, the route you chose. Truly, it's a commercial enterprise, though, I think.
Have there been discussions in the past about core areas that maybe aren't listed as commercial that would be better suited for commercial? I don't know if that's ever been discussed, or that's a possibility.
I don't know that that ever got the, into the comprehensive plan, part, part of it. Typically, in other communities, you look at commercial areas that have good access to transportation. Typically, most commercial facilities need sewer and/or water. The fact that Breezy doesn't have a municipal water system is somewhat working against them as far as a, commercial activities are concerned. Typically, a lot of commercial activities need fire suppression. There are ways to get around it, but it's very expensive. So I, I think when you look at where, that zoning ordinance, most of the commercial stuff that's out there follows County Road 11, for the most part, which is your major transportation corridor.
And for what it sounds like, the production of this part may not take up a ton of room where they wouldn't necessarily need the 20 acres of property. Would you mind coming back up? I have a question if you don't mind. So just in consideration of other commercial properties, do you need a large space for manufacturing this? Or is it contained in a smaller area?
No, I just need, you know, less than 4,000. I'm looking at probably like a 3,600 square feet available right now.
Thank you.
Yep.
Isn't there going to be some hangar lots available pretty soon, Jerry? Or are they available now?
Pardon?
Those hangar lots, are those available now?
Uh, there's There's...I think there might be one lot that's still available on the west side of the airstrip. There's been talk about developing these lots along County Road 11 here. I don't know where that stands at this point.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Obviously, you have a specific request that's before the commission at this point. Obviously, it's not in a formal version, but just to get the commission's thoughts on it. But I think we step back a minute. You've had now two requests in the last handful of months, or just even just this year, of the nature of a request to do a commercial enterprise, a commercial operation in a residential area or a residentially zoned property of some kind. Obviously, both of these are zoned, I think, differently, but they're residential in nature. I think this is just actually bodes a trend that we're going to continue to see, especially when you look at a post-COVID world of where the...how the economy has shifted in the last two years. And as you pointed out, only 6% of all our parcels in the city are commercial. So I think at some point, there is going to be a policy question that the Planning Commission is going to have to answer of, okay, if we do want more commercial in the community, where is it going? And what kind of commercial activity are we going to allow? Is it going to be strictly the traditional commercial? It's going to go in commercial district? It's going...you're going to have...it's going to be a commercial-sized, style building next to other commercial businesses? Or are we going to start looking at, you know, some of these bigger parcels, areas that are more spread out, operations that don't have lots of traffic or impact, and allowing those in that area? So that's where, you know, I think we're getting to a point where we kind of have to start answering that bigger policy question of if we do want that more commercial businesses in our community, essentially, how...where are we allowing them and in what form are we allowing them? That's just the two cents I have.
Am I correct...excuse me. Am I correct, Jerry? The biggest obstacle to doing this under the home occupation ordinance is his employee does not live in the premise.
The letter of the law, yes.
Okay.
Now, there's an option that if you felt that it should be a viable home occupation, you certainly could look at changing the ordinance, or that it would be a relatively easy change if you would allow that, to just basically take out the section about employees or just add employees, number of employees dictated by conditional use permit or something like that.
I'm trying to understand why that language is in there in the first place. I...why would we...we limit it to four people, correct? Four employees?
No, you're limiting it...the letter of the ordinance states they have to live on the premises.
Okay, it doesn't limit the number of employees?
It says the number of employees shall be limited by the interim use permit.
Right. That's the only limitation.
That's the only limiting is how many you put on there. But then, it is limited that only family, those can only be comprised of family members. You could have 20, you know, if the Planning Commission allows them to have 20, they could have 20, it's just that then they would have to be only family members. So that's the only limiting factor. Madam Chair, I have just also noticed the time. Can I request we have our two-minute break quickly just to reset the recording?
Yes, we will take a two-minute break here.